So welcome everybody into another backtesting session. In this series, what we're going to do is going to the beginning of 2022. As you can see, it's January 2022 up until the end of 2022. So up until December 2022. Also, we'll do a whole backtest based on our recent bit of revision and basically simply on the one-minute chart. Doing a new session. So we can see already now, starting from this day, that we don't have any news. So I'm going to basically have the perception do its job. So and I want to, as always, start when after the 8:20 AM Eastern, which is here is 1:20. As you can see, it's 20 minutes after the open. And then we might also keep this one for example over there so that we always have it visible. And yeah, so so far. So far, this is this is the price action. This is my construction. So we will look for sales below this level. We have these areas, this area for possible PSA and of course buys only above this level. Sales below there and I will want to monitor the price action over here. So let's see what is actually happening. So so far, we're seeing a first rejection, strong rejection at the first minute. That's something that I really want to take it immediately. We are retesting this previous lower lower low in this bearish trend. So that might possible high-risk all-award entry for continuation sales. It will be, this will be the safest entry, this will be the high-risk all-award. Because now the price is reacting most more likely more to this level rather than the PPI. So we are actually seeing a slowdown in the price action. Yeah, we might, this could be a very high-risk all-award entry. For possible continuation bearish. If we want to risk it already for the biscuit, we could sell 15 pips. Up, taking this range based on the market structure. Market structure is from the bearish, we are reacting at this level. We are seeing the slowdown in market structure and that's where we could take our first entry. And the price is ready going, if it's breaking below, yeah, that's good. We're making a new low, yeah, very close to the TP. Let's see now if it pushes back down, I'm not managing the trade. And yeah, I want to really see it, to see the price action do it, where it goes. Okay. So that's it. Okay, so far, you see, it's looking promising because the price never made, never made a close above the PPI. Yeah, we just need a spike in volume for the for the TP to be hit. And that's that's very good first trade. Let's see now if we get a candle, clear candle closures below these lows, especially with the new four-hour candle. Or if we see a full correction, so far, I received further reaction over there. Now I'm allowed, also, this is possible area, possible buys. But I would love, of course, now we're in a bearish trend and I'm looking for sales. Only if we see a further rejection, break a retest of this area, then we might take continuation price, reverse a buy. But let's see now with the new four-hour, it's already opening. If it breaks below, that will be very interesting. Otherwise, if we see a correction, ah, yeah, a correction, then we might act accordingly. These are the PSAs. Basically, okay. So let's see. Okay, that's a quick reminder that in this simulation, there is no rewinding. So I cannot go back if I miss an entry. So so far, I would be very cautious about it. If we see a retest with this of these lows, I would want to take an entry at any candle close. This candle closing at the PPI might be tempting. Let's see if we give, gives us a further retest of this lows. With the next candle, yeah, it is retesting it, we might, we might want to take that entry. So now it's a little bit later entry because I missed and I cannot go back. You can see this top loss is quite narrow. But let's see if we can see the continuation bearish. You see, it will give us a better entry over there. Yeah, stopped out, as you can see. Failed to break, yes, so far, it looks like there's a rejection. As if we get further within New York Stock Exchange, we get a further break below this level. Because now we are in New York Stock Exchange, my entry over there will still be safe. So that's why I was not, that was not good to have that entry. Yeah, but New York Stock Exchange will open and take me out anyway. So very strong volume, strong push, we are breaking above. Let's see now if we see a correction. Okay, so far, price looks like it's staying above. I don't really like to take this entry over there, but I would love to see it as a confirmation for the price continuing bullish. Okay, so let's see. If we keep pushing up, we see something else, you can see. Now we are correcting it, double bottom at this level. I would only wait for, want to see this price action to be to be broken. We are now at a 10 AM candle, already open. So let's see if now in this last hour, we have some healthy volume or we can just call it a day with a win and a loss. Let's see if we have any breakout of our PSAs. Okay, I don't get London Close. Let's see, I have to be very cautious about it. I have spike single volatility. We might also see, not taking it because now my day is off. We might also see this kind of price action now. Yeah, actually, the opposite, okay. So, and this is it for this day. As you can see, we ended up with a profit. We took 45 pips and then we lost 15. Very bad trade, very bad entry over there, late, not waiting for the proper candle close. So a little bit of impatience, but yeah, that's something that happens. Let's now go to the next New York Open, which is around there. Okay, so we have these areas. So let's see if today we have any news. We have, okay, we have some Fed members speaking and we have at 10 AM, we have our testimony. So that might bring a lot of volatility into the market. Tomorrow, we have the CPI, which is very high, very important. So far, let's go to the 8:20 AM. Okay, let me just save the simulation. Okay. Let's see the price action, so of course. So far, I would love to see this area broken down, this area broken down. To see the most likely trade ideas, but let's see what is the market offering us so far. In terms of price action, I remember that in an hour and a half, we have a testimony. So we might also stay on the sideline, waiting for that to happen. Okay, so far, well, in this range, let's see if now we break below. We are seeing moment bearish momentum, lots of momentum, 20 minutes to the new four-hour. So we might see clean break below these lows with the proper price action. So let's see, price gives us a first trade idea. Okay, so far, it's breaking below, let's see if we break clean below. And this week is on the left-hand side, this one, with only the PPI. So far, this is simply bouncing from there. Of course, I will not take this level as a reference, because it has been broken. Let's see now if we make a new lower high over there. That can give us further confirmation for our trade idea. So far, it's breaking it, staying below. Now, yeah, pushing up, I don't really like it. Okay. Let's see for the new four-hour candle, okay, the new four-hour is opening. Let's remove this, it might still be active as an idea. This one, of course, we are only taking the sales below this level. We also have this price action on the left-hand side for the buys. Might take this last high. Let's see. Okay, the new four-hour, it looks like we have a clean break below. This entry would be in profit. Let's see now if we have the opportunity for this entry over there as a retest of this previous weeks on the left-hand side. Okay, very fast, I would say, but let's see. If I actually get the opportunity to enter. So this entry will be in profit, as you can see, only six, seven, eight pips. Drawdown, this entry would have been underway from the tick chart, yeah, not even retesting. It would already be in profit, but didn't give us a very nice entry. Let's see if now we have some sort of deeper pullback to give us opportunity, maybe with New York Stock Exchange. Otherwise, we will just wait for some market structure to create and then to be broken. Okay. This is the candle close. Might be tempting with one of 15 pips, stopper would be over there. Uh, yes, let's see, let's see this. Very high risk all-award because the entry is not really perfect, it's not really as close as possible to the PSA. But let's see if the price action then is confirming us. Like in this candle, for example, we would have got the following minute, we would have saved like five pips. So that's a huge saving, huge saving because the stopper would be five pips above. Let's see if we have a continuation bearish now. Yes, so far, it's very promising. Coming into New York Stock Exchange opening and we are at our entry, which is not good. Because the price can easily spike up and give us, and stops us out. Yes, you can see, the very next candle can easily stop us. Yeah, stopped out, let it stop out. And let's see if now an appropriate entry would have actually saved us. But so far, the price action is quite sketchy. Yeah, we would have lost anyway. So let's see now, the next one. So we're not really, we're not taking a set up, all is above there. There is not enough market structure to take any high-risk type of buys. I will even then take sales only when that system is clear. Bearish market structure, especially from this level. Okay, so far, let's see now, in 20 minutes, we also, our testimony is starting. So let's see now the price action. Quite mixed. Okay, now it's 10 AM and the testimony starts now. So let's see now what is going on. Let's see if we, if I may, can give us some, some good data. This might possibly be a new higher low being created for possible continuation buy. Okay, so far, we failed to break above and this will be 30 pips in profit. Let's see if we have a clear cut candle breakup so that we can give us opportunity to enter. It looks like it is pushing up. Okay, now it's okay, it's pushing down. So now, let's see if the price aggressively pushes below this low, might take this trade with the correction. Let's see, let's see over here. So let's cancel this again. Okay, let's see. Okay, now there's a lot of volatility, looks like we are bouncing back again from the same low. Let's see if we have a final breakout above this level, which can give us some nice opportunity. We are also coming to London Close. Let's see. Okay, so far, now we might be breaking up. Okay, let's see now if we, price can give us a retest. Okay, so we are retesting this previous highs. I would allow to see a candle closure over there. It might be that this is the retest on the, to continue on the upside. This entry, I know if on the 60 ticks, will be, there will be any entry over there. Probably, but let's see now if the continuation bullish, that was the retest or the price can give, actually give us further retest. Okay, yes, so yes, this would have been the entry to take, that I wanted to take also. I spent a trade idea, but I actually missed. It was the retest was too fast. Only on the 60 ticks chart would I give a retest of these lows. And I also want to go and check it. So as you can see, even on the 60 ticks chart, that will not be it. You can see the retest of the previous highs was exactly the same. So we would have both the charts saying the same. So not really, I mean, unless I really wanted an entry, I took the entry over there. This will be missed. Yeah, as well, it's quite late, so it's okay, it's okay to miss an entry. Let's move more to the following day, which is CPI day. So we have to be very, very cautious about it. Let's see, over here. So this is it. So of course, we're not taking any trade before the actual CPI, which is expected to be month over month. We don't have the year over here, so expect to be decreasing thanks to the interest rate hikes. Let's see the result, because the result will, very, very, the reported data will be very sensitive. Be very, very, you know, you get me, about what the Fed will have to do afterwards. So so far, based on this chart, I will only take sales below this level. And for the buys, I would want to see with some market, market structure forming and then breaking above. Because we are in a bullish trend, we tested this previous highs. So let's see with the actual CPI, so far, as you can see, volatility is increasing. You don't enter right now because the spread is wild. And yeah, here, the spread is fixed at 1.5 pips, but it's not really matching the, the actual news. So that's why I will only enter a few minutes afterwards. So let me just, in a second. Okay. So let's see now, the news is coming lower than previous, but higher than expected and higher than expected and higher than previous. So it looks like I wouldn't have the year over here, we could go and check it. So let's see, custom, January, January 22. It looks like 12, 12. Let's see, the CPI, year-over-year was increasing, as you can see. Increasing, very much increasing, even more than expected. So I am expecting now a very strong, one single candle like this of the screen. Oh, I forgot, I expected a way more aggressive reaction. Still, I'm very, very bearish on this, on this side. As a fundamental bias, let's see if we have any clear cut break above. But I am mainly bearish, multiple failures to break. Yeah, we might take a high-risk all-award entry over there. Yeah, better not to do that. And this might be a high-risk all-award entry, but of course, I will wait for the proper price action. Okay, so so far, the price action is bullish, even though the news was higher. So I will wait for a possible retest of these lows or wait for some price, some dust to settle. Because I don't want really to take something that I'm not understanding. So let's see now, the price action. Do we have a retest of these lows? This might be the retest of these lows. Yeah, I mean, if we just want to base ourselves on price action, that would be the entry. We have to think here about fundamentals. Yeah, it looks like we're getting stopped out. Yes, so now, of course, I would rather want to see a break a retest below, a retest below, with this price action. Okay, let's see, the new four-hour. Now it looks like we're staying above, but I would of course wait for price action confirms. Okay. Now we're staying above this level. Very mixed, very mixed price action, I would say. An entry over there, it must still be live. This entry is a bit, might be good, but I'm only looking now for the buys above this level. So let's see, coming into the 10 AM candle. Okay, double top, so far, mixed data, mixed price action. Now staying above, I will only take above there. And yeah, slowly coming into the end of London session. So really mixed data, try to take this one only go 15 pips. Quite weird price action, I would say. I don't know why the data was so mixed. Let's see now if we have any breakout with London Close, but yeah, so far, it looks like not. Yes, so let's go and jump into the next session, the following day. Okay, New York Open. So today, what do we have, I think, jobless claims, up with the PPI and the jobless claims. Expecting a decrease, expecting a sort of contraction. Let's see now, over here, okay, so this is the candle open. We have these big price-sensitive areas on the left-hand side. This is more, more significant, so so far, I'm just going to look for the buys and sales. And this is of course a range of, with almost 100 pips. So I will wait for, of course, for the news to have some, any intermediate prices that they want. Okay, so let's see, with the news in ten minutes. We have sales to enter before that. So okay, we have PPI, very, this is decreasing. And unemployment claims, huge increase. Let's see the PPI here over here. Yeah, strongly decreasing, yeah, so. Revised from 9.6, wow, that was a big increase, big increase, actually. Yeah, so far, minutes data, this is very bad. Also, the position was revised, so it was upside. And let's see what is the actual reaction of the markets, I'm expecting some bullish price action over here. Yes, that was a liquid to grab and now we can see the continuation. Okay, we're still taking the continuation of this area. Okay. The new four-hour candle, not really have much happening so far. Let's see if we break above. Below this area, these lows. Above these highs. Coming into New York Stock Exchange opening. Coming into New York Stock Exchange opening. Okay, let's see. Okay, strong candle reaction. Now I'm borrowing the price action so far. Okay, now we are closing and staying below 10 minutes below that. So let's see if we have a candle, a bullish candle closing at this level or possible continuation sales. Okay, let's see. We sell. Okay, we get stopped out. Now it's a titanium candle. We might be seeing now the new lower high being created. And I want to take a second opportunity. Second stopped out. Okay, fixed out multiple times. And now price is going down. Yeah, this is going down a lot in volume. Yeah, it will go down. It will actually go down. So I said my entry was very bad. If I waited for this candle, I would simply stopped out. Yeah. Yeah, quite unfortunate. I could have entered again, but yeah, it was. Um, I was a little bit frustrated, I would say, for the two losses. So I didn't enter any, any other time. But if you think about it, if I entered again, staying into my trade idea, then I would be profitable again over the day, maybe with two losses. Uh, yes, that's part of the game. Let's close off the week. With New York open over here. Okay, so let's see now. We have the return sales. Let's see the impact of them. Da, 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 okay. Of course, I didn't enter before that. Okay, so now it's a twenty. And we have this stronger PPS. Of course, there are possible buys, sales. Very dependent on the data. That is coming up in 10 minutes. I will not enter over here. Okay, let's see. Uh, very, very bad, I would say. So I am expecting a spike up and a possible retest. We might read this, this highs. When the sales below here. Then also, also see this area on the upside. Okay, I might want to take this very high risk high road entry. Lots of volatility. Yeah, not like in this candle close again, with multiple failure to close above. Let's see. What is the market telling us? Okay. Staying bullish and going into correction. Yeah, I don't like it. Coming into the new four hour candle. We're going in the right direction. Volume is simply dying down. It's crazy, it's crazy to think about it. Yeah, 26 pips. Very, very, very much frustrated, I would say, with such a strong price action. But yeah. It is what it is. We have consumer sentiment in half an hour. Let's see how it comes up. Now we have New York Stock Exchange opening. Let's see if we have a break below this level. Okay. So far not. So far it looks like now we are breaking below. Okay. Okay, you just back up. Let's wait for the consumer sentiment. Okay, so let's see. Uh, is decreasing quite a bit. So I will expect some buys. Or expect the further buys above this level. Okay. So far not much of a reaction. Possible high risk high road entry below this lows. Yeah, but so far the price is just ranging and are coming at the end of the London session. So yeah, basically this is it for the week. Um, minus 3%, uh, as you can see, a little bit, yeah, 26 pips with this trade. Unlucky with this couple of trades. Unlucky, but then frustrated and not able to re-enter again, as you can see. Uh, the, the retest was this level. If I enter over there, I would be very, very unlucky, but probably this entry, I should have waited. Uh, you know, I tell you what I should have waited for. I think this entry is fine. Not entering over there. I would wait, I would need to wait below these lows. And that's actually, uh, where the entry should have been. As you can see, this would have been the entry. So this, this candle should have been the entry. And avoiding taking this second one. Because it doesn't make sense to enter over there if the price is still failing to break above below. So I need to wait for the candle to actually break below. And I guessing will possible continuation now. So that would be the best entry. And it would be already, uh, 1% more. And actually, we had the first 4%. And then we took, I took this loss with the return sales. Again, probably had multiple opportunities to re-enter again afterwards, but yes. And then what do we have? We have a, a loss, very high risk high road on Tuesday. Based on market structure, based on, yeah, very, this was very, very rushed entry. And then yes, we had this win as a end of pullback and then one loss for the possible continuation. So guys, I hope you enjoyed. This is it for this first week and I'll see you next time.